Move on to number 10, CDBG with Ben.
All right. So, good evening, City Council, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So, the item before you tonight is in regards to CDBG, so Community Development Block Grant Funds. So, bear with me a little bit. I've recently trying to work on becoming an expert in this. And so, but thankfully, I have a great staff with Ms. Jesprey Corr, who's helped me put together these multiple plans and then also work through the public process and allocation process to come up to speed with that. So, we'll start with this. So, the item before you is really regards to administering the city's CDBG program and determining the 2021 funding allocation amounts through conducting a public hearing to finalize the submittal of a new 2024 consolidated plan with an accompanying annual action plan with a required analysis of impediments for fair housing choice study with the plan. And so, a little background, the city is considered entitlement jurisdiction through HUD, historically receiving annual allocations through CDBG. But lately, it's been about 600, 650, 666,000 this year. And so, the CDBG program intent is to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, expand economic opportunities for low to moderate income persons. And so, here's a quick table of what that means for low moderate income persons. It's based off this HUD website for our MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area. And so, what that means is the low moderate, you're making less than $36,000 a year for an individual. So, with the administration of the CDBG program, HUD requires the completion of a five-year consolidated plan. With this fiscal year being the time for the new, with 2020 coming, basically as of July 1st, we're required to have a new five-year plan. This plan mirrors the past plan. There hasn't been a significant change in priorities for the city from the consolidated plan previously, but it's basically time to update to meet any new federal requirements, HUD requirements, and then also to start that public process to get input from the different, from public interested parties, et cetera, to have input for that plan. And then, the annual allocation of the CDBG revenue is supposed to mirror those priorities of this consolidated plan. So, as part of the consolidated plan, the city coordinated an update in accordance with the citizen. So, in addition to these plans, there's an actual citizen participation plan in place by the city with approval from HUD regarding those specific outreach efforts pertaining to CDBG. So, with the update, as briefly described earlier, the consolidated plan and an analysis of an impediment to fair housing choice was required and done in accordance with that citizen outreach plan. And then, it also incorporated any sort of findings in the consolidated plans. No impediments were found. This isn't just a standard impediments when I first discussed it regarding lack of housing, low income. This is really more, is there discrimination? Is there, is it hard for certain low-income groups to have people getting insurance or realtors willing to work with them due to the values? And so, through this study and the outreach that was conducted, there was no impediment found for our area, but there was some input from the legal services division talking about, they did receive some input about discrimination against disabilities. And so, with that, we put it in the consolidated action plan where there's a potential to work with outreach efforts or workshop to make sure property owners or when they're doing rentals, that they make sure they're aware of any federal rules, guidelines regarding non-discrimination. So, the five-year consolidated plan. It's this five-year document that it basically goes through these HUD requirements and steps to identify the priorities of where to spend this CDBG money when it comes in. And those priorities are not in order of significance. We've done this specifically to put these priorities in there, so when funding becomes available, we're not forced to pick one priority over the other. And so, the list is above here, and I'll go through them real quick, with affordable rental housing, rehabilitation of existing housing, construction of affordable housing, homeless housing and supportive services, housing and supportive services for special needs populations, public improvements in infrastructure, public facility construction and rehab, and economic development opportunities for low and moderate income individuals. The consolidated plan recognizes the needs exceed funding. And so, and through that, we just work through that every year with this allocation based on city, through the public process of developing the annual action plan and having input from council and through the public hearing. So, with this consolidated action plan, one of the big takeaways is that it's due August 16th. And so, the timeline for this is August 16th, as we work through all the public notices and the approval. And so, for this year, the city received $666,861 for the 2021 CDBG fiscal year in accordance with HUD regulations. And this is where the CDBG, it's never been one of my favorite funding sources, to be honest, just because it's, there's a lot of strings attached. It's federal money. There's maximums on the program administration costs. There's maximum on the public services amounts, and there has to be an overall 70% threshold that's going to these low moderate income groups, and then you have to audit quarterly updates and verify that it's going to those groups. And by the way, they want it spent right away. So, we go through this. By the time we actually get the money, it needs to be off the books next June, July, so it doesn't ding us and hold money back for next year. And so, it's definitely a restricted funding source that not all the groups are capable, the general public, of meeting those federal guidelines and issuing the bids. So, CDBG process. So, kind of a long slide here. I'll try to push through it. So, notice of funding available. So, early in the beginning of the year, basically, we put out an ad. We send out emails to past recipients, potential future recipients that we think might match the funding. We put out a ad campaign to basically say, hey, we want to have a workshop. We want to let the world know that we have this funding. If you have something that might qualify for this funding with the intent and the priorities, please submit application. Applications are due in March. This year, they were due right before the COVID-19 process, and so, we worked with the pandemic, but we worked with some of the groups, including the consortium and all that, to make sure that anybody that had interest in the workshop or reached out to us that they all were able to apply. A staff internal committee reviewed those applications. It was comprised of our CDBG consultant Stuart, consulting, finance department, and I don't know if we have Public Works staff there or not, and then we also have, I was maybe wearing half Public Works hat when I was there, and also with Development Services team. So, through that, we prepared a draft consolidated plan, including this annual action plan. And then, to proceed through the steps, then you issue a 30-day public notice, which was May 15th, and then we're here right now on this bull, council review and approval of the consolidated plan, annual action plan. And so, I want to stress that tonight, the annual action plan, it's really a public hearing for public input and for council direction. We understand that there has been priority changes since February, just with funding requests from different agencies and from, and through the pandemic. And so, this is the opportunity today to really look into that and modify it if we need to. Future processes is submit the applications, supporting documents to HUD for approval with the intent to hit the August 16th date. And then, staff then administers the program to meet funding requirements and deadlines. Here's a quick snapshot of what the allocation plan funding amount is for this year, and then I'll go through each one item by item. And so, the first one, so city staff, admin cap. So, historically, we've charged the maximum 20% off the top, and that comes basically, what we're doing is we're setting that aside for city staff, that basically it pays for our consultant, my time, Ms. Corr's time, and anybody that's working on from the city for CDBG-related functions and how that funnels into our internal services. And so, with that, we recognize that some years we don't get to the max, particularly last year. And so, with that, what happens is historically, we then roll that remaining balance into the allocation for next year, depending on how we use that. So, right now, 20%, 133,000. Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. And so, through the consortium last year, we basically provided, last year, we provided the consortium 48,000 and then Sutter County 48,000 due to the reporting requirements and just the way the auditing and the way the funds roll out through HUD and to comply with everything, and then how the emergency shelter, the Better Way was operating, it was through discussions with the consortium and their representatives, it was, it seemed more efficient to basically just give the money straight to the consortium, and then they're going to sub-allocate it out to the county. And so, the county, the emergency shelter operation is receiving 51,000 of that 100,000 as a sub-recipient of the 100,000. And so, the 100,000, it's technically 100,000 and 29 if you hit the 15% cap. We rounded it off, but there's not any, we've hit that cap for the public service category. So, we've basically told the consortium for homelessness needs that you've hit a full allocation amount. And so, then you get into the programs or the projects, is like we like to say. And so, we received, we received applications for Freed in the amount of 25,000, which is a little bit more than last year. They've received 15,000. I believe historically, it was around that $15,000 amount. And so, this year, they bumped it up with the intent that they're going to take over a program that the city used to administer through the senior center for senior handyman services. And so, Freed basically is going to provide that minor home improvements to disabled and senior citizens. Habitat for Humanity, they came in with a bigger request this year. They weren't funded last year, but they were previously funded years back, few years back. And so, they have this loan, basically repair program, so a low-interest home loan program that they basically, that they're utilizing the CDBG money. So, the Regional Housing Authority, this one's a little interesting, and I want to highlight this, because when the application came in, the original request was for 55,000 with a minimum for 50,000. And so, when we were doing the accounting on the available funds and who were funding, internally, to be blunt, we had a hard time funding one unit, $50,000, where we see 60,000 or 25,000 going to multiple people. And so, through that, there was discussions to minimize it. We worked with Regional Housing to find out what's the minimum amount that could be allocated, you know, or is there a way to spread that revenue around so there's more of an impact instead of one unit? And so, through that, and then also with the city recognizing that the intent of the CDBG money is home, is rehab homes, to provide housing, trying to stay within the priority and the theme, and then work with Regional Housing as partner, there's existing fund balance. I'll show you a little bit. There's for a program, for an existing program from previous years called Owner Occupancy Rehab, Owner Occupancy Rehab. And so, it's this loan program that is technically through the City of Yuba City administered by Regional Housing, but there's a lot of guidelines you have to follow, and there's been a real drop in that. It's real similar to the Habitat for Humanity program, but it's administered through RHA, and there's been a real drop with the COVID-19, and then just being able to follow those stipulations also. So, with this funding being so critical to get off the books in a timely manner, what the proposal was, was to allocate them 25,000 and then shift 25,000 of money that's on the books to fund the full $50,000 request. So, and then, City of Yuba City Maple Park, 100,000, that was the request, and we funded it. And then, City of Yuba City ADA improvements, a personal favorite of mine regarding the ADA requirement updates. And with that, it was funded, it was decreased in funding for those that remember last year to about 140 to help with the Kingwood, Regional Housing Kingwood apartment roofs. And so, with this year, with the balance, I put it into the ADA, the infrastructure improvements for those low-income areas to make up for some of the loss last year and then the available amount. And so, here's a quick slide. It's hard to read regarding CDBG accounting. And so, on there, this is what we have carryover that's currently on the books, and you'll see the administration carryover. You'll see the allotment from this year. You'll see this Yuba City Senior Center that hasn't closed out yet, and then adjacent to it are the balances. And so, some of the highlights here for me when I'm looking through this is that the administration budget, we're getting a big balance. We need to figure out how to shift that and allocate that soon. And then, also, we need to, with the owner occupied rehab, that's starting to get a bigger balance that we need to get off the books because it's starting to carry over. And so, with that, we talked to Regional Housing Authority. They have one loan pending, and sometimes one loan for rehab knocks out a big chunk of it, so we don't want to totally wipe it clean, but at the same time, we looked at that as maybe the opportunity to, with the intent being owner occupied rehab, shift that over for the 25 this year for the remainder of Richland Housing. Okay, so, there's been a lot of talk too about pandemic and then stimulus funds. And so, through the CARES Act, the city received $392,000 of CDBG CV funds that were specifically distributed through this formula allocation through the CDBG program. And so, they gave us a stimulus, but they made it really hard to use, to be blunt, is what they did. And so, through that, it needs to follow all of the CDBG program or guidelines regarding the 70% threshold to the low income moderate. It needs, and then that real stipulation is it needs now to be specifically accountable to COVID-19 pandemic. So, it's not, it can't just go to housing rehab. It needs to go to housing, construction for a isolation room related to COVID-19. It needs to, the, and so, it makes that funding source pretty tough. And so, we're working through the logistics of that, and then, you know, I guess it cannot be funded, and also, there's this doubling of funding. So, if they qualified for PPE funds, like for economic development or for economic loss due to the COVID-19, if there's any sort of funding that was received through the other fund, the other stimulus resources or revenues, then you can't double up on that. And so, it's starting to kind of whittle our pool down of what the available uses are, you know, so, and then with that, there's also the process that you have to go through. So, a couple ideas, or well, specific categories would be, it has to be COVID-19-related buildings, improvements including public facilities, assistance to businesses, including special economic development assistance, if they don't have overlapping funds and they meet those economic thresholds, provisions for new or quantifiably increased public services, and then planning, capacity building, technical assistance associated with COVID-19. So, what staff is recommending for the CDBG CV funds is that we follow a similar process as the annual action plan, where we put a notice out, see what type of input we get from the public, to follow that, and then we, and then also any direction that the council may have tonight, where we potentially reserve a portion of that for economic stimulus. And then, we would come back to you with this allocation request for those new funds, and we would update our plans to insert that, so then we can move forward and start programming them. So, tonight, it's basically conduct a public hearing, and then any input from council or any alternative recommendation, we take that in consideration, and then we either move forward with recommendations A and B, or we modify the plan to the point we come back and then recommend it. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have received two. One was from Lisa Rojas-Palado. Regards to item 10, I motion to divest, to divest from police funds and to real, reallocate funds to CDBG, make CDBG the top priority, let this sector receive more from the general funds than the Yuba City Police Department. And we have a second one from Thomas Burns. These welfare programs are un-American. The intermingling of government and private sector is fascism.
Any more public comment?
Not so far.
All right, I'll take, we can comment from up here, but then we'll open the public hearing.
Okay, I've just got some questions first. And you may need help on this one.
I'm sure I will.
How many attended the public workshop? I know we had a concern about that last year about, and I know with COVID-19, there may have been some impacts, but it always, it always interests me to see how well the outreach is and who showed up to learn more about the program.
You have an opportunity I could bring you up? So, the public outreach was in February, so it was a little, it was right at the beginning.
Good evening. So, for our public workshop, we do typically receive the same individuals that come. Typically, it's Hands of Hope. We have our member from the Salvation Army, I believe he was there. I can definitely come back to you with the exact individuals. We do have a check-in, but we did also have Terry Reilly from the consortium. We did have a member from Freed. So, I would say about three to four organizations were there.
Okay, thank you. Next question. She might, she might want to hang around and help you. Again, this goes back a few years, but my understanding, or public, and it seemed to bear out on the presentation, public safety facilities are eligible.
So, absolutely. And so, and that was one of the, especially with the COVID-19 funds that came in specifically, we were trying to figure out how to tie that in. Some of the concern, the immediate concern that came for me was with it having to be built within a year, and then only issuing 392,000, it doesn't go very far towards public improvements that you have to specifically say are warranted for COVID-19. So, if we wanted to build a new isolation room, the concern was I got 392, but it might cost me a million. But it's definitely when we go out for that request for funding, I definitely want to push on the city departments and to say, any ideas, we're open, you know, anything from IT to provide additional teleworking communications, anything that is, that we could tie to that accounting is definitely open.
So, I know that in the past, and I would go back to the main CDBG program, it had, projects had to be qualified by lower moderate income area census tracts, correct?
Correct, but there was a public facilities, to go back a few years, we did, there is one of the priorities in the con plan had public facilities. And so, there is a little bit of leeway where you're supposed to be in that census track that's for low moderate, but if it is a public facility, such as a police station or a firehouse, then there is some leeway if we could, if it meets the goal. And so, we're, at City Hall, it's been used before to help with ADA transition, bring the counters down, improve bathrooms. I think the police station, we worked to put in some ADA ramps and some concrete work as it tied into, in various things over time.
So, I do know there are some public safety facilities that have big plans on them, but there's also some immediate needs. Were any of those brought forward in this process for the regular CDBG funding?
They were not.
Okay. Second, or last question for me is, can we amend the, it sounds like you're wanting us to approve a five-year plan through 2020 through 2024. Can we amend that plan at any time, or is, once we approve it, is it solid?
I defer.
I knew she'd be back.
So, we do have the option to amend it, but we did keep our priorities very, I guess you can say vague, so we don't have to come back to amend the consolidated plan. So, we are covering a very wide basis where if we do receive applications, it will be covered. However, if we do receive an application next year where we would be interested in funding, we will come back to council to amend the consolidated plan.
So, when either one of you, when you're looking at the funding, and you come to us for approval, so I understand, and we still have a check and a balance, what are you using as far as priority criteria? I mean, obviously, up here, it looks like there's a lot of, lot of housing stuff, and I'm certainly cognizant of the fact that affordable housing is a major issue in the community, but I'm just wondering if there's a matrix or some other method of ranking these projects as they come through, or is it?
Well, I would say, from my experience, that most of the time, the applicants get funded, because there has been such a minimal amount of applications come in, that there is a real effort to work to fund those applications, because most of the time, they are, they meet the goals of the program as far as rehabbing low income for Freed or Habitat for Humanity. And so, there's been a real effort to fund those applications, and then the remainder would then go based on priority of what's been submitted, with Public Works submitting regularly, I believe, since some of the early 2000s lawsuits regarding accessibility. They've been putting in a standard application for that amount of money. And so, that's typically one of the first programs that gets hedged in order to meet the other program needs that they've requested.
So, I guess if I hear you correctly, there really isn't?
Well, I mean, so there's overall goals that are real vague, that we just talked about, that you could hit them real easy. You got, there's a need that's a lot bigger than the resources, and so, anything to do with homelessness, anything to do with housing for low income, anything to do with infrastructure improvements, and with the City of Yuba City Census Track, it's really easy to hit on a lot of those. And so, through that application process, we receive Regional Housing Authority, Freed, they've been the power users for the applications that come in, and then the remainder going to the parks over the last few years, and then also to the ADA over the last decade.
Okay. I think that, you know, for council concern or consideration, that is, is I think we have some internal needs that are probably qualify for some of this beyond just the ADA stuff in regards to some of our public safety facilities. I'm keenly aware of one instance right now that, you know, maybe it's going to take us a year to get into that planning cycle or that project cycle, but I would like to see us spread some of that money out to public safety as well. We have some pretty strong needs in some of these facilities.
That is definitely in your preview, purview, and also at the council's priority. And so, so with that, it's the only thing is that it is a difficult funding source, and it needs to be administered timely and correctly, and I know our team can do that, but it's tough to put it into a general slush account. If it's tied directly to, we're going to fix the roof, we're at Fire Station 5, and then move forward with that, but we could definitely work through that based on priority. But we could definitely work through that based on priority.
I would say that, you know, that's, that's not your task necessarily to come up with those projects, and I'll call them shovel-ready projects. It's the department heads that have the needs to bring that forward to you. And I would task, task each department in that respect.
All right. Go ahead, we're going to open up a public hearing to receive comments in the 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan, the 20 to 21 Action Plan and Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. Public hearing is open. We have anything by chance?
No, we have not.
All right. Seeing no public comment, we will close it. And now we have a potential action item.
Through the mayor, can, Vice Mayor, I just wanted to add, I think in the presentation for one of the questions that you were asking about the priorities of the funding, I'm familiar with the funding because I've been utilizing it for quite a while. It is quite intense in reporting for, for this particular funding source. And in here, I think you were probably looking towards more, more of the public facility construction and rehabilitation area. And there is allowances, from what I'm familiar with the rules on these funding, to, to make some adjustments. And I think possibly Ben and Jesprey, you, within that ranking and rating of those applications, right, that's where that opportunity could have been for perhaps sharing that, extending that out to our internal team to perhaps have some access to part of this 666,000. The, the, the reporting requirements are really meticulous. And so my question to you, Ben, is, is Stuart Consulting doing the reporting, or are you doing a Jesprey, the, the, the reporting? Because I look, I noticed the carryover funds and, you know, because it takes a while for, because it's all reimbursable, correct? So Jesprey, can you help me with that?
Yes. And so are you asking for, sorry, this always makes me a little nervous, but for, if you could please repeat your question, I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem. Relax, we're just together talking, okay?
Yes.
So do you do the accounting reporting for the CDBG or does Stuart Consulting do it?
So I, the way it works is all of our sub recipients will send me their information. So they will provide me with how many individuals they've assisted, as well as if it is any rehab programs such as Habitat for Humanity, they will give me all of the homes that they helped, as well as any additional information. So then I will go enter that into ITIS, which is what HUD is reviewing. So they give me the information, I enter it in, I do all of our drawdowns, which is where HUD realize, HUD knows how much money that we are expending. So I do that. However, Stuart Consulting, they do help us with a lot of one-off questions, and then they did assist with putting the consolidated plan together, the action plan, as well as the impediments reporting as well.
Okay. You answered that question perfectly, okay? So then, along with Vice Mayor Boomer, one of the other that I, I'm glad you brought it up because I had the same concern, and in the consolidated application, there's a section of that there's a citizen participation, right?
Yes.
And so I don't, I noticed that, and that was, I think Stuart Consulting did that particular plan for us and between you and Ben, you know, oversee that and work with them. I noticed that most of all of their correspondence with our partners was all email. So was it because of COVID-19, they changed that process?
Yes, so for this round, unfortunately, due to COVID-19, it did really delay or limit our, the way that we could interact with individuals. I know there was lots of phone calls made as well that Stuart Consulting was doing for us to get in touch with these individuals, but mainly it was through email.
Okay. So that clarifies that, because that's why that changed, because normally it's like in a group where they invite, I believe, right?
Yes, so we did have the workshops that were held. There was one in November, then we had another one held in February. And then we did have our internal committee review the applications via a virtual meeting as well due to COVID-19. But so we did have a chance to meet them, but the remainder of it, once the consolidated plan was put together, it was through emails or virtual meetings.
Great, great. So you answered all those questions. I think with the COVID, with the CDBG, the COVID-19 CARES money, I would suggest to the council that perhaps if we could do a little bit more planning on, on that particular money and help make that decision and possibly not make that decision on that money now. But there's also some of that carryover funds. If, are those carryover funds obligated to the same, exact projects, or is there an allowance to change the direction of that carryover fund because we're modifying it? You know, there's a modification.
So with the COVID-19, there is no cap on the public services, so there is no 15% cap, which is amazing. But so for these, for the carryover, with our regular CDBG funding, it will have to remain within those caps only for our administration costs. So that's the 20%, and then public services at 15%. But if we were to move over, let's just use our admin funding from this year, we could use that towards another project as long as it's not for the public services. For the CDBGCV funding, that is primarily for the COVID-19 response and prevention.
But we could utilize that 300 and something thousand on one project if we really, if the council agreed.
Yes, that is correct.
That's an option. Man, you are good at this.
Oh, thank you.
You are really good. And Ben, you did excellent for that quick lift, you did great, okay? Because knowing that you didn't have that background, so I appreciate that. You did really well. That's all.
I know what CBG means, though.
Besides some sort of soup, right? Thanks.
So did you want to elaborate on the, we have?
And so I guess just to add a little bit about the carryover funds.
Yeah.
And so my understanding, and Jesprey, please interject, is that if, if, if you do not adjust more than 50% of that value, you could do it, we could do it internally without amending the action plan where we have to come back, notice it, and do that. But if we add, if we delete or add new, the process, it's allowable and can be done, but it adds to the process where we, we issue the notice, once we've confirmed what that's going to be, we issue a public notice, wait 30 days, we come back to city council.
What do we, we have interest in not voting on anything tonight or holding over, or which you're?
What I was suggesting was the COVID-19 part of it.
COVID-19.
Yeah, but the other is, I'm, I'm ready to vote if you, if the council is.
And I don't think the COVID-19 is even indicated in this part?
And so I will make sure I clarify on that, too. With the COVID-19, without us doing the public notice, working through that workshop, hearing any input, we will have to come back with an amended annual action plan. They give us more time past the August 16 date. I believe they give us another year to figure out the allocation.
Right now, it's with either both or not, is what you're saying?
So right now, we, we'd like to get direction on the standard CDBG funding.
Okay.
Well, either we change that and we come back and approve it, and then we'll come back with, once we work through all the processes, come back with the COVID-19 CDBG.
So right now, if we're gonna, I'm sorry. So if we're going to go forward minus the CV part, we can go forward, it is necessary for resolution or just for us to add, tell you to move forward with your plan?
So in order to go forward tonight with approval of the recommendations, council would need to agree with this allocation. Should council, substantially, should council decide there's other priorities or there's been other requests or needs, then which substantially change these, then I would recommend we put that on hold, provide me direction tonight, and then we'll work through updating this allocation request, and then we'll notice it, come back to you at a, at a meeting late July.
Okay. All right.
Is the what we're pushing in, or it'll, it'd be in, right before August, I think by the 30-day notice, we'd push for it.
I think you want to talk?
Yeah, just real quick, I know that in the just approved budget, there was funding identified as being funded by CDBG. So we've approved a budget that I think has fund, funding sources through CDBG, correct?
With the timing, with the budget going in February, March, we do try to give a heads-up to those budget, to those departments so they could accurately do that. But has it changed in the past? It does change in the past.
Just wanted to make sure that if we do something different here, it may have an impact on the budget that we just approved.
I'd also like to add one point, is that since the time that we prepared the capital improvement program, and when the applications were due for this program, we have two projects related to fire, one being at Fire Station 1, there needs to be a repair to the roof, to install a foam roof over the existing roof. And we just got an estimate, if I'm trying to recall, a budget estimate of about $60,000. Then also that there's some dry rot at Fire Station 2 that needs to be repaired. That dollar amount is less. And so if I could ask Ben, in terms of what would the process be to, either to be able to utilize rollover funds to fund those two projects, or, you know, what are our opportunities to address those two projects through CDBG? And could they be addressed through CDBG?
So the rollover funds can be used. They could be reprogrammed, they can't go into the public service amount because you've hit that cap, but they can be deducted from the admin costs and then reprogrammed into projects. To use generally, you know, we could, the priorities for the program are they need to hit this, if I, if I could show that they hit public improvements in infrastructure, you know, I, I just, I guess I'm a little bit hesitant on the spot to say a re-roof on a, on a fire station hits the goals of CDBG. It is for public improvements, it is in the low-income, moderate threshold, but I would, conservatively, I'd like to make a phone call to HUD tomorrow just to make sure that I dot my i's, cross my t's, that it doesn't throw us into some sort of accounting issue. But readily, it hits our, it hits the priorities of the city's consolidated action plan. Is it the intent of the CDBG program, I think we had them here regarding housing, provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, expand economic opportunities. So they're trying to hit those matrix, matrices. It's definitely in our consolidated action plan. The argument is, is it a part of providing a suitable living environment and then having that assurance with HUD so we don't get it taken away from us later on? I was long-winded, but I will check tomorrow.
I think that's a safe answer.
Okay.
Am I good to go?
You are.
All right. Going back to, I was more concerned with this year's allocation, Mr. Moody, because in keeping with the intent of what we are supposed to be doing with CDBG, it should be benefiting the community, and it should be doing as much as we can for low to mod income housing and helping those residents. Where I struggle is with the RHA 50K period for one unit rehab. There's a pattern that we've had over the past several years with the regional housing that we're like a piggy bank. We put a roof on this, we remodel this one unit. We need to be impacting more. I would much rather see the 25,000 for Richland Housing be used for something that could fall under that that would benefit all the residents of Richland Housing if possible. And I know I've posed that question and to Ms. Langley, and we got the update that there's been some, you know, playground equipment that doesn't need it, things of that nature. But I would be more interested in helping more than just one unit, because to me, a rehab of a 768 square foot unit, if I'm not mistaken, for $50,000, that's pretty steep. And at some point, and I know RHA is, is rebuilding itself, but eventually it should be self-sustaining for these repairs in, internal, okay? So I would much rather see that be used for something that benefits more than one unit. So my first question is, have we had any of those conversations with RHA to try to get more benefit to more people than just one unit?
Absolutely. And so with that, you know, early on, it was to confirm the scope, and then also recently trying to figure out how to utilize this on the books, this owner occupied funds for rehab to meet the intent of that, that project and the city's goals, and how do we get that moving with the city being a partner with that? And so through the discussions with RHA, with the feedback, you know, we partner with them on many of our programs with, with home for federal programs, and then also with the CDBG funds. And so they're aware of these reporting requirements, they're, they're familiar with the CDBG funding source. And, and for them, with their recent improvements to kind of the community, they didn't have any readily available project to serve a, a bigger group that they thought they could meet the timeline for this year with the CDBG requirements. But, and then the scope on that, you know, and we balked at the amount, too, for one unit, and the, the input for the public was that it was a complete gut. And so it was part of this Richland Housing facility on, on Garden Highway, where they're working through this, this update of the complex, and it's a complete HVAC windows, a complete gut. And so to hit prevailing wage rates and to issue it as a 50,000, unfortunately, it turns into a big number.
Right. And, you know, following the year-over-year, kind of the bouncing ball here, you know, they might decide to do, and this is pure speculation, but they might decide to do another unit next year, so now they're back for another 50K. And so we're rebuilding, you know, one unit at a time. And, you know, I look at Freed, Freed does their home repair, and we gave them 15,000 last year, and I think they did four or six projects that benefited four to six families versus 50K and one family. And that's the point that I'm trying to make. I think we need to try to get the benefit to more versus spending a large amount on one. And I think RHA bears the burden on this as well, that they need to figure out how to balance that at the same time that they're recovering. Going back to other needs, and, and I ask you to check with HUD to make sure, but I know that I have checked with, with people that are quite versed in CDBG. And the bottom line is, if it meets the demographics, it can be used for repair of public facilities. And the one that came to my mind, which the Vice Mayor was alluding to earlier, has come up, is Fire Station 2. And if you look at Fire Station 2, Fire Station 2 sets directly across from low mod income. You've got Melton, you've got Casita, you've got all of those duplexes, quads, apartments right there. What happens if we don't get the repairs to Station 2? And, you know, we have to relocate Station 2 or do something because it's, you know, not up to snuff for the, the guys to operate out of? That is definitely a direct benefit to low to moderate income housing, because it's directly across the street by about 100 feet. I want to see the funds used personally to where it has the greatest benefit to the most people. You know, like we're doing the ADA across the city, vast amount of improvements across the city benefits a large majority. The playground equipment with all the handicapped access and stuff, lot more accessibility, lot more benefit to a larger audience. I just, I really have a hard time with the 50,000, 25,000 out of this and another 25 to gut one unit. Personally, I, I would say if they, if there's no alternative project that benefits- Personally, I would say if they, if there's no alternative project that benefits more, I would ask that that be reallocated to the improvements that is immediate needed is Ms. Langley said for Station Two, we have dry rot this got to and it's less than 60 because that was the other. Do we have a, an exact dollar amount?
I'd have to go back and look, but it was, I can't recall the number. I know it was less than $60,000.
Okay, whether it covers it all or not, we're in a tight budget. We're in a, in a tight budget and we've got some immediate needs that need to be taken care of. So personally, I would not like to see that unless RHA can come up with something that can benefit more people than one unit. So everything else I'm good with, but if they don't have anything, I'd like to see Station Two be repaired.
So I guess just to interject and with, with talking through some of the scenarios with the consultant in CDBG is that it sounds like counsel definitely has the purview to do that with the caveat that the funding is ideally for housing. And so if not funded today, but maybe next year, then it's really an effort on my side that I need to get with regional housing as our housing partner to figure out a program. So there are some funds at some point, either through the city or through regional housing or one of these for housing.
Through the mayor. I'd like to let Councilman Shaw know a few things or let him know what's going on here. Yes, it is Richland Housing. It's a 24 unit complex. It was built in 1962. So it's old and tuckered. And through the years, they do a unit at a time. They've done approximately 14 units out of 24. They're up to their next unit and like he said, it's a complete gut job. From the roof to the floor, everything's going to be in it new, electrical plumbing, everything's going to be in it new, updated for handicap also. And the only reason why it's 50, and they do this every other year or so, they do this project and through the years, and the only reason why this project is $50,000 is because it's prevailing wage. It's just the same thing that we go through is why it's that. So if they're not able to do another unit and it sits vacant, then we're dealing with family that can be homeless. So I, it's, well, I mean, it's just one family that cannot be housed. So the only downfall out of this, I mean, is the prevailing wage and that's why it's that much. And they're coming in and asking, I've been to tours and stuff like that. The places are immaculate. They do everything with the funds and stuff they have. And this is one of the things they get to, they get to come to the city with CBG funds and that each year or each every other year, they make a unit better. Like I said, it's 1962, we're 2020 and they need a little love. So I'm hoping that we can push this forward so we can have this unit taken care of and have another family that could stay there and not become homeless in the future. So I'm hoping you will help us push this forward.
Through the mayor, just a quick question, Mr. Moody. Can RHA not borrow out of the other fund where they were getting the 25,000 to match it? Could they not borrow 50,000?
So through discussions with RHA, the minimum for this project was 50 to get it through. You know, my understanding from the director is that it would help go toward, I know they're working through two units right now. So they've completed 14, they're currently using their own funds or different revenue sources for two. And so technically, this would be the 17th out of the 20 plus for that facility. And so I believe, I believe Gus is online. I don't know if he could provide any feedback via the chat, but I don't know if he has a way to supplement his side for the 25,000 remainder to move that forward.
And actually, we've got, you've got 25,000 out of this side. You said the other 25 was coming from the loan program of some sorts is what you said. It was.
And so we have a program called this owner occupied rehab.
Okay, can he not get the entire 50 from the owner occupied rehab? That's my question.
So he could, and that's a city program, owner occupied, the regional housing authority has the ability to, and so there is that ability to do that. The only caveat was there was one loan in process. So if you have 106, 110 on the books, if you took away 50, you know, you have 56. And so it just would be whatever loans we would issue over the next year or going forward have to be in that cap.
And how many do we typically do of those a year?
There hasn't been much in the last couple of years.
So it's really, so it's really not a major concern. So we could actually draw the 50 from that to get it done, but free up 25 to repair Fire Station? I think I asked the million dollar question.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I guess the, in a perfect world, we like to keep $75,000 in the program and a typical loan is 30 to 40,000.
But we're not in typical times and you said there's very little activity. I personally have no problem loaning or, you know, out of that fund, the 50,000 RHA to do the unit so that we can take care of a priority city facility so that it's a little safer than what it's been. We know that that's a disaster up there basically, that the whole thing needs to be rebuilt. So that would be my suggestion. Use the other funds for RHA to get them their 50 and use the 25 for public facilities for Station Two.
Yeah, but we could use the COVID-19 335,000 on the station also. Can't we?
Well, he was said, there's, there's some tricks to that. There may be some others, but for the immediate right now, this is the absolutes we know. Am I correct, Mr. Moody?
Correct.
Then that would be my suggestion, 50 from the other and reallocate the 25. That would be what I would offer up. That way we meet both needs.
Do I have a consensus, I guess, with nod?
I guess through the mayor, my only concern, I think, is as long as we find the money from somewhere within that CDBG to cover that, that fire station need, because I think it goes beyond just dry rot. Dry rot brings other problems which are potential liabilities. And, you know, I don't know if that's carryover money or what is available. You guys are the subject matter experts when it comes to that. But I think, I think to boil it all down, I think what you're hearing is, is there's an issue with some public facilities that we could probably allocate some of these funds to if, if it's legal to do so. And I think you're going to back check on that. And as long as, I think, I think what you're hearing up here is we'd like to do both projects. If I'm going to give you my priority, my priority is to make sure that that fire station was, I'd probably, if it's not the first busiest engine company in the city, it's certainly the second. So it's, it's, if that thing was to have to be shuttered for a mold issue or a dry rot issue or something else, you're going to extend response times and now we're talking about lives.
Yeah, I think we have an opportunity, I'm just basing on my own knowledge of, you know, CDBG funding and working with it, that we might have a really good opportunity with that CD money, you know, for the situation that you're speaking of, Vice Mayor. I think with Richland Housing, it's a, it's a, I agree with Councilman Cardoso that we definitely need more housing. It's always the issue with the homeless community. So I mean, shuffle the money wherever you like, the end product's going to be the end product. One is utilizing a loan structure that we haven't accessed. But I also recognize that Mr. Moody and his staff, you know, he's just been on board recently and he's, he's doing the fast reading and catching up on all these things. So I think that he's trying to be very accommodating to all of us and trying to give us the most amount of information so we can make decisions. I, knowing HUD, I think it's wise, Mr. Moody, that your comment you made earlier that you, that you confirm the switching of funding because you have the protocol process through the ranking and rating. And in that, and you did a 30 day notice and all those particular pieces, that you check with HUD before you make any drastic changes, just, just to confirm. And if, I mean, we could do, I guess, a motion with a what if situation and consideration. If HUD says you can't change that 25,000 from Richland Housing based on these particular rules of HUD, then we need to know that. And if we can take the, you know, switch around the money because obviously there's opportunities within that. So I would say have Mr. Moody really check this out ahead of time so we, we know exactly what our parameters are in making those decisions. Because I didn't, I would, the last thing I would like is for an audit from HUD and then take our money back and pay that because Mr. Moody was trying to really be an accommodating to us, but at the same time, HUD is not always friendly.
So a couple of options I'm seeing tonight is that I could definitely go back and scratch our pencil and talk to the department heads regarding public facility improvements and then look at our carryover specifically for the admin fund because that's a readily available one where it wasn't captured last year. And so instead of leaving in that early and then switching it over, we could identify that use at this time. And so, so I can, I'll plan to get with Public Works and the department heads regarding the capital improvement budget to see where, and meet with HUD to do that. And then I could come back with the, an updated recommendation. With that, I just wanted to try to get a consensus regarding the RHA money with it being one unit. Are we still looking at being, are you comfortable with reducing the owner occupied funds? Or would we like to work that into more of a public improvements for the city? Have you followed me?
I think we agree that if we modify to, we'll get the 50 from somewhere else and put 25K toward the Station Two improvement.
Well, and then with that, we're looking at a potential, if we use all of the admin money, carryover, you're looking at about a $300,000 pot that you could play with that we, I could get and fine tune. Those projects confirmed with HUD, they're, they're applicable and then make sure that they can be delivered in that timeframe.
So everything we've discussed, are there a little bit of modifications and changes? Is that within the purview of acceptable level of change as we move forward this resolution we're requesting? We need to put that on hold for your, for your purposes?
Bear with me one second because there is some trick, there is some tricks with a carryover admin fund as far as not having to re-notice that maybe we could identify it as public.
Want to give you as much as we can tonight, but we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner either.
So we're going to shoot at it and if we have to, we're going to come back and amend it because we'll have to come back anyways. And so, but with the carryover money being past year's funding and how we're going to allocate it, I believe if we make a generic account, public facilities improvements and then request that the existing admin money, the carryover admin money be put into that. So we're, we're talking about 300,000 there or 200,000, excuse me, 200,000. And so 129.5 plus 77.8. We put that into the public facilities improvement with the 25 of this year's money for regional housing. Well, I don't want to totally unfund that. And so we can't, so you can't totally unfund without having to go back and re-notice. So I would say you take, we unfund 25,000 of the owner occupied, put it, add it to the public facilities improvement account we're going to create and take the other, another 25 out of the owner occupied and fund the rest of regional housing authority. If you followed that.
There's a slide that you had up there that talked about the categories of funding. There it is. Why is this not public facility construction and rehab for, for a roof repair? It's a public facility and you're rehabbing it. Why, why is it public improvements? Just curious.
I don't know if, so if we call it public improvements and infrastructure, if it's a new accounting name?
I guess to me, it looks like, second from the bottom, public facility rehab. When you say improvements, I'm just, I'm going, well, we're not really improving anything, we're rehabbing something that is existing.
I would agree with you. I think that's a better, better title for it and it falls under that priority. And so we could call it specifically the public facility construction rehabilitation.
Thanks. Alright, so do you have what you, are you going to, do you have more to say, Grace?
I was just gonna, Mr. Moody, I think was referencing that particular title because we were talking about it, but it could go either way. So you're, you're on track. Thank you.
Alright, do you have everything you need?
As long as we're comfortable. So we're going to have what we have above, but we're going to create a new line item that has this public facilities rehab. We're going to put in carryover money, that's approximately 200,000 and 225 where we transfer 25 old occupied money. So, so we're going to come back. So it, it sounds like there is a little kicker that you can't allocate more than half without having to come back and amend it. But if, if that's the intent, we'll come back with that direction, we'll notice it and then we'll, we'll, we'll show it as an amendment. But, so it'd be public facilities rehab, it would be carryover balance, which is down at 112. We would bring over old owner occupied rehab to a comfortable amount that doesn't jeopardize a current loan. And then we would, we would, we would fund the RHA with the 25 of that.
So it's the same thing that we had planned at the beginning?
No, we, we created a new account with 135,000, $140,000 for public facilities rehab is what you're asking.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Moody, through the mayor, just clarification. The intent was still to take the 25,000 out of CDBG and move it over to the other program completely because while we've got a couple of small repairs mentioned to Station Two, we're easily going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars with what's really needed with Stations One and Two, which both of them will fit the radius. So I keep hearing you going back, we're leaving it as is, leaving it as is. My intent is still 25,000 out over to the other program to get the whole 50 from. If you're able to free up money from the admin, it rolls through for we, you know, so we can reallocate the public facilities for rehab.
My apologies if I misheard, but I guess my takeaway, and I could play with the numbers with a carryover balance, is that you want RHA to be funded. I guess that's, and so it's just a matter if we're funding it with this year's 25 and last year's 25 or all of last year's 50 in reallocating this year's. And so I, I definitely, there's, there's no headaches doing that. We'll, we'll work with HUD and we'll come back with an action plan with us not trying to do it tonight. We have time to go back and redo that. But I guess the takeaway, I want to make sure I'm clear on that I don't come back, is that you don't, you want to fund RHA, but you don't want to use this year's allotment.
That is my intent.
Okay.
And Ben, you know, this is clearly complicated, but I would even suggest if, you know, looking forward, we have a lot of projects. But I would even suggest if, you know, looking forward, we have a lot of projects for fire stations alone, PD, and I'm sure numerous other buildings. Maybe, you, you guys know how to do it better than what you, but we can have a placeholder for future lists of what we're using CDBG for, for our public facilities, for future allocations. Because there's definitely a need, as long as we can do so appropriately and legally, I would, I would be interested in doing that, having a standing.
It is definitely note taken and there will definitely be a push at next year's allocation meeting for the department heads and for those, you know, a push for where we could double up on other cause.
Thank you very much.
So, so no action tonight. We will come back at a future meeting.
All right. All right. So we'll move on to item number 11.
Excuse me, mayor?
Oh, do we have public comment?
We had two more public comments.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. One was from Thomas Burns. And he said Fire Station Two is in desperate need of a complete remodel and addition. That Fire Station is very inadequate. He also said that Manny is absolutely correct on the wages and that the 50,000 is actually good for those extreme wage rates. And then the other comment was from Alyssa Rojas-Palado on item 10, right? Yeah. The Fire Department has a 25% budget from, from general funds and thus has enough funds to fix one of its station's roofs. And also she says, or the funds can come from the highly funded UBS City Police.
Okay, thank you. And that was the only two?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.